Like to call to order the November meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First item we have on the agenda would be a roll call.
Berthold.
President.
Koleski, Jacobitz.
Here.
Bealy.
Here.
Miller and Berger. Absolutely. You have a form.
Okay, we have a form. Next item is approval of the minutes from our October meeting. We had a copy in our packet. Anybody have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
Move approval of the October minutes?
All favor I.
I.
Posed. Minutes accepted. New business. First item we have is for 1549 West Beecher Street, a dimensional variance. I assume someone's here to speak on this?
Yeah. Travis Sisher, Greening Group.
Real quickly, what is it we're looking for again?
Yeah, the 30-foot easement on the eastern site or eastern edge and then 10 feet from the southern setback.
Nothing different than what we looked at.
Nope.
In February, I believe it was.
Yeah, it all remains the same.
So would you repeat that again, Joe? From the, on the east side of the property?
Yeah, 30 foot from the eastern setback and 10 feet from the southern setback.
Okay.
That's a reduction you need?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners questions? And there's a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public? Speak on that? Anybody online? I don't know if we have anybody online or not?
No.
Nobody?
Not.
Okay. Based on what they're asking for, we went through finding the fact, meeting on February 6th, and we actually approved what they're doing, what they wanted to do. They're back before us again because the six months has run out and nothing was done yet. So that approval has expired. Since there's no questions, I'm not hearing any questions from any commissioners. Based on our February 6th finding the fact, I say we look at the same thing based on that and we're not going to go back and review all that because we already have covered that. So unless there's any questions, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the variance based on the finding of fact from our February meeting and that the resolution provided by staff be adopted.
Do we have support? We have a motion, we have support to approve the recommendation based on finding a fact from the February 6th meeting. Do we have any questions on the motion? No questions, roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Bealy. Koleski. Jacobitz.
Support.
Berthold.
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Your six months are ticking.
Alright. Yeah, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we have for 905 North Main Street. And Jeremiah, is there anything you want to throw in for this second item just?
Approve them, so. We, Mr. Chair, we settled the matter with the people who were requesting the ordinance interpretation. We came to an agreed interpretation, so they've withdrawn that request.
Okay, I do understand there was stuff said about a public hearing on.
There was, yes.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak on 905 North Main Street, which was interpretation of the ordinance, which they have withdrawn, but since we listed a public hearing, we need to open that up, which we have. Anybody online? I don't see anybody online at all for that. So basically, we will close the hearing and I don't think we really need to vote on, is there?
No, it's.
Okay, item's been settled already. So we're good. Any other old business? No?
No.
Anybody, future new business?
Not at this time.
Any public comment on anything pertaining to the zoning board? Hearing none. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Planning Commission will convene at 7 o'clock.
That takes us to trouble.
I have a big, I have a big one. Wonderful.
I remember. I mean, there is not. They've got a lot of stuff on their. I mean, all the time will be.
Folks, we will call to order the regular November meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. First item on our agenda, your roll call, if you don't mind.
Jacobitz.
Present.
Love.
Here.
Weatherby.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Watson.
Here.
Taylor.
Present.
Gals. All commission members present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of our September meeting minutes. Commissioners, you have copies of those minutes. I presume you've had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections to the September minutes?
Move to move to approve.
It's forward.
We have a motion in support for approval of the September minutes. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is consideration of case twenty four twenty five at fifteen forty nine West Beecher Street as a site plan review. Sir, if once again you'd identify yourself.
Travis Fisher at the Greening Group.
Fisher.
Tisher.
Tisher, thank you. Mr. Tisher, if you would very briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do.
Okay.
We have, we have.
Okay.
So the site.
So it's a approximately a three megawatt ground mount on the property on the. It's on the eastern side of the property. So we're, we're looking at doing, augmenting their power to help out with their ESG goals. So it's a PV project. It's.
PV meaning.
Solar photovoltaic.
Okay.
So.
It looks like a big chunk of the panels are in the, in the drainage basin, the retention.
So that area actually, and I brought our engineer with us, it's a area that is. Where the fence line you can see on there, it actually slopes down about five feet to there, and that is actually outside of their actual retention pond. But they had to increase the size of the retention pond based on the drain being in a, like a little bit weird location. Further. I don't know if you want to explain it any better.
Essentially, those.
If you'd step to the microphone, because otherwise we don't get it recorded.
Jeremy Pickford, the Manic and Smith Group. So those panels that are within that area, the panels are not actually within an elevation that would be below any of the water. So, you know, the foundation for that stuff would be within that limit, but they're not affecting the storage capacity of that basin.
So worst case scenario, the panels will never be underwater.
No.
The posts might be.
Yeah, but they're not, again, those posts, the volume of that is not going to affect the storage volume of that, of that basin. So that basin is still going to function as if they're not there.
Um, what is the general height of the panels above grade level?
On that, I believe it's. It's like six feet total.
So if I'm standing next to one from its head high.
Yeah.
You're not that tall.
Here, here.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicants? Mr. Love, anything? No? Chad.
Three megawatts, is that what you?
Yeah, it's about, it's just under three megawatts.
So how many panels is that?
Believe it's like fifteen hundred and ninety six.
I'm sorry?
Or I'd have to look at the plans again. I believe it's so six sixty watt.
About fifteen hundred, you say?
Yeah. Actually, no, forty five hundred. Sorry.
Oh, a lot more. Okay. Other questions? Brian, any questions for them? Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate it. Folks, this is a public meeting. If there's anyone in the audience, either present or online, that wishes to comment on this site plan, we'd be. Willing to hear from you.
I just want to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
It's nice to meet you all. My name is Kyle Timmison. I'm the Maintenance and Facilities Manager at OP Mobility was Plastic Omnium. Before that was Energy, before that it was Solvay. So the prints you have will say Solvay, but now it is OP Mobility. We've just recently changed our name. So this is a, a big initiative for our company. We were trying to reduce our, our carbon footprint, lower our energy usage. And this will help reduce.
No.
Down the street at City Hall. Go up to the second floor.
So this is a really, really important initiative for us. Appreciate all of your time reviewing this and going through it all, but it will help us reduce. A significant amount of our energy usage that we're purchasing from consumers' energy. So we're estimating somewhere around sixteen percent of our usage. We are one of the largest consumers of energy in the county, I do believe, with, yeah. Without disclosing all that, but we are one of the highest, I do believe. And this is a really big step for us to become carbon neutral. And I think we have a, our goal is by twenty fifty. To be completely carbon neutral. So not, not consuming an excess amount and producing carbon, but being completely neutral. So this is a huge step for us to go in that direction. So thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. You could probably contribute to carbon neutral by not changing your names often.
Say one all the paper.
Um. Commissioners, if there's no other questions for the applicants, staff has reviewed this, and if I understand correctly, their only required or request. Is that we have the Drain Commission review the plans before final approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was the only comment from anyone else from engineering. I think that's just because it's appears to be in the basin, but um. You know, they can send it over and have it.
Okay, quick review.
Yeah.
Okay. If there is no other discussion.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, please go.
And I voice my concern to Jeremiah, and I think you have it. So. This is one of those projects that's, I have no problem them doing it on their own property for their own use. But my concern is people are going to see it and then be like, well, we can buy all the industrial property in Adrian and put solar panels on. So what does our code? Surely has nothing to do with them in this, but what does our code say?
About.
Some, we sold that property on over by, over by them.
Right, right.
Why, why is that? Who is prevented from putting solar panels all over that and making it look hideous? And we can't do anything about it.
Currently, we don't have anything in our current zoning ordinance, so this will be for the new zoning ordinance to address. You know, as practical matter for, for what's called industrial scale or, or utility grade, the solar projects like that. You, that would be a, too small of a site and too expensive land for that kind of project. They buy a farmland for that and they need.
Farmland now?
Square mile, but it's not farmland values. The value that they paid for that like is much higher than what you would pay for farmland that they would like to get for the land is much higher than you would get for farmland. So as a practical matter, it's both too small and too expensive for that, but there's nothing in the ordinance about it at all right now. When we have the new ordinance, we should have provisions that, and there are some draft provisions in there that deal with. The distinction between, yeah, so, so-called solar farms, which is, you know, solar arrays or even wind arrays as a principal use versus this, which is an accessory use.
Okay. My other question is, and this doesn't really have to do with you guys doing it. So the screening with the trees along Beecher Street. Do we have? Well, you know, we require site plan review when they put trees in. They put the smallest tree, not that you guys are going to do this, but they put the smallest trees in and then they die in a week.
And we don't follow.
We don't follow. Do we have in our ordinance? Yeah, we.
We have leverage to maintain.
Leverage to be like, you put them in, but you put. Oh, yeah, yeah. Ones in and then you die.
You must continuously comply with your site plan. Anything that's on your site plan has to be maintained in perpetuity. So that, that's a zoning violation if your trees die. There are minimum standards.
Whether it's unfortunate, entirely different story, but.
Well, if we're aware of it, we do. You know, in the size requirements, there are minimum size requirements in the current ordinance. They will be in the new ordinance as well. You know, so. Yeah, this is a little different because. You know, industrial, you know, is, is held to a different standard, but. Yeah. And, and you can't screen, you know, you can't shade solar panels. So, you know, there's really literally just a road and screen it from the street.
Yeah, I mean, but they could, they'd plan to put trees in to make it look nice, and that's.
Right. No, those will have to live, and if they don't live, then they have to.
And you guys take nice care of them. I drive by every day, so.
Any help? Nope, no. Other commissioners, any comments or questions? Hey, with that said.
Move to approve the resolution.
Support. To adopt the resolution and support with the stipulation that it is reviewed by the Illinois County Drain Commission before final approvals. Is that?
It's in the resolution.
Yep. Who supported that?
Done.
Done. Okay.
Okay, unless there's any additional discussion, we will call both, please.
Watson.
Support.
Johnson.
Support.
Weatherby.
Support.
Gals.
Yes.
Taylor.
Support.
Jacobitz.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Pushing past unanimously.
Gentlemen. We'll forth and make electricity.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Planning Commission on any other topic? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for adjournment. Or, or motion in support. All those in favor, please indicate. So by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.